Okay, ready. Good evening, Altadena. Good evening, community. Good evening, council members. The Altadena Town Council meeting for April 17, 2018 is hereby called to order. The time is 7:09. Item number 1.1, that will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we have a very important group within Altadena. They are called the Neighbors Building a Better Altadena. They have been very active, and I am sure that anyone who is in Altadena has somehow come across this group. We certainly appreciate March Nichols as they want to represent the NBBA to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. So, thank you so much, March.
Thank you, Akori. And I'd like, as we made the Pledge of Allegiance, for us to take just a moment to reflect on what liberty and justice for all means to us here in Altadena. And as we rise, hands over heart to symbolize our commitment, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and let's give NBBA a round of applause. We will now go to the agenda item 1.2, which will be the roll call by Recording Secretary, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Council, when your name is so called, please acknowledge your presence. Nestor Delatorre?
Okay, is an excused absence.
Okay. Akori Izimi?
I'm present.
Veronica Jones?
Here.
Victoria Knapp?
Present.
Jennifer Lee?
Present.
Billy Malone?
Present.
Diane Markison?
Here.
Judy Matthews, present. Justin Robinson?
Here.
Gloria Sanica?
Present.
Patricia Sutherland?
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas?
Present.
Sylvia Vega?
Here.
John White?
Present.
Reginald Wilkins?
He's excused.
Dorothy Wong?
Dorothy Wong? Excused.
Okay, we have a quorum of 13.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Matthews. And moving on to Agenda Item 1.3, that will be the April, today's meeting agenda approval. And turn it over to Councilmember Sutherland.
Copies of the agenda are on the piano at the back of the room. There are a couple of adjustments that I need to make, council members, so if you've got copies of the agenda, please make note of it. The Executive Committee met on April the 10th to set this agenda. Since then, there have been a couple of corrections or changes that we need to make. Okay. The first one is Item 7.4, Safe Streets Committee. That will be Ann Coleman instead of Dorothy Wong. And under Census Track Reports, we have one for 4601.
And I'd like to add 4603.02.
Hang on a minute. One at a time, please. Forty-six, it's 10, and?
Yes. I'd like to add the reports. Forty-six oh three point oh two.
Are there any other corrections or adjustments? In that case, I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Councilmember, you have heard the move by the Councilmember Sutherland for the agenda tonight. And all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, now, that is the agenda for tonight. Okay, officers report, the chair's report. Again, good evening, Altadena. We certainly appreciate you coming out. And tonight, instead of reading a lot of things, I would like to say that the four-letter words that have become, I guess you're now getting used to it, and that is progressive ideas and community engagement. That is what we are all about, and we appreciate all the council members that have been out there. The Education Committee is doing exceptional work out there. I do know that because of the community engagement, tonight, we are very pleased to have the interim chief from PPD is one of those additional olive branches to continue to allow this community to get comfortable with law enforcement policing. And of course, that relationship with the sheriff station, we want to make sure that that continues. That is you, the community, that made those requests. And tonight, it is an opportunity for us to begin that process of having the law enforcement from Pasadena to also support us as well as advise us as to what is going on in our community to get more comfortable. This is just a very brief visit, as we will be planning eventually at another time to have what I would like to call a formal forum to where there can be that closeness and discussion or dialogue. I certainly appreciate Councilmember Jones for the day of dialogue. It was well received. We had a number of people that came, and it was very productive, very fruitful. A lot of the people that I spoke to felt like the law enforcements are now listening to the community. And we know that leaders, us, or anybody who is a leader out there, have no more power than the people give them. The power is with the people. And once again, in all that I do, I make sure that this council and myself, we do not allow our personal agenda to override that of the community. It is all about the people, and we appreciate the people coming out tonight. Thank you so much. Moving on to the Vice Chair's report, Councilmember Sutherland.
Fortunately, tonight, it's very brief. Wanted to let you know that if you have not been here before, we have comment cards, public comment cards. If you'd like to make public comment, they are on the piano. If you would like to speak, please complete one of the cards and turn it in up to the, one of the council members on each end of the table. There are going to be three opportunities to give public comment tonight. Right after the public safety reports, there will be general public comment on anything that you'd like to bring up. There will be public comment after one of the presentations on the Devil's Gate Reservoir Sediment Removal Project, and there will be public comment on the item from Land Use Committee that the council has to vote on. Those are three opportunities that you'll have to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilmember Sutherland. And moving on to the Recording Secretary's report, and that will be Councilmember Matthews.
Council, you were provided the proposed Altadena Town Council meeting agenda of March 20, 2018, with a response date of Monday, April 16, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not hearing corrections or additions to the minutes, I move at the minutes of March 20, 2018, and all supporting exhibits are approved and accepted.
Okay, Councilmember, you have heard a motion from the Recording Secretary regarding the minutes, and it has been properly seconded. What would you like to do? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention. One abstention. Okay, so that is the minute. And the Correspondence Secretary is not here, but we will make sure he gets it so that he will get posted, published on the website. Treasurer's report, Councilmember White.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The account is in good standing. The balance is 2242. Please consider contributing what you can. We expect to have some expenses associated with the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember White. All right. Correspondent Secretary. Unfortunately, Councilmember Delatorre was not able to make it tonight. It was a last-minute change in his schedule, so he has, he sent me something to read into the record. It says, "Correspondents from San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District, Mosquito Awareness Week, April 15 through the 21st. Please visit their website for more information on preparation to protect yourself." And that is www.sgvmosquito.org. The Website Committee, ongoing discussions with Chris Miller of Pasadena Media to host a video archive of previous ATC meetings. So, that's what is going on with the website. And again, even in his absence, I'd like to continue to thank him for the effort that he's been putting in towards the Altadena Town Council website to become more informative. So, whatever information you're looking for, if you're not able to get it here, then you will find it on the Town Council website. Continuing, he says, "We are always looking for members to join the Website Committee. No computer knowledge or experience necessary." And he wants you to contact the Correspondence Secretary any time of what needs to be included in the report. Just bear with me one second here. Okay, I believe that's all that I have that he forwarded to me. So, the council, I have read you the Correspondence Secretary's remarks, and I guess we'll leave it at that. Okay, thank you so much. And moving on to the, this will be public safety reports. And let's start with the California Highway Patrol. Officer Mike, please.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. I brought along a special guest with me I'd like to introduce to you, but before I get into that, I'll go over the statistics for the month of March, and this is for 2018. So, throughout the month of March, did I say munch? Sorry. I did that earlier, and I was like, okay, I can't do that on camera. Throughout the month of March, there were 25 property damage collisions. Of those traffic collisions, eight of them were injury-related, but those injuries were minor to moderate. Two of those traffic collisions were DUI-related. As I had promised last month, Diane, I'm sorry, Ms. Markinson, enforcement is up. There was 51 traffic citations that were issued throughout the month of March. The leading cause of officers making enforcement stops and issuing citations were stop sign violations. And that was a reduction in traffic collisions that we saw from the previous month. As you've heard me say before, intersection traffic collisions and right-of-way violations are the leading causes of traffic collisions in and around Altadena. There were no fatalities, which is always awesome to hear. There was one other DUI-related arrest. And that comparison information for March of 2017, there were 29 traffic collisions. Those were property damage only. Eleven were injury-related, and one was DUI-related. Citations were kind of up last year, but I think I had mentioned this last month, but that was because of grant funding. There were 79 traffic citations issued. And then there was one independent DUI arrest that was not associated with a traffic collision. Did anybody have any questions regarding this information?
Councilmember White?
You just mentioned grant funding. Could you explain?
Well, one of the things that we do throughout the office, like my Sergeant Amaya that was here a couple of months ago, he had wrote a request, and we tried to petition overall safety and funding so that we could have extra officers beefing up patrol. So, that was where that money came from, so that's why there was a little bit more enforcement.
Is that ongoing throughout the year, or?
From time to time, we try and have officers or supervisors write requests to try and quell traffic collisions, fatalities, if we have, like, problematic areas. But that funding was something that we used in the Altadena area as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Officer Mike?
Nope.
Okay.
Everyone, I'd like to introduce the new commander for the Altadena CHP office, Captain Tai Wong, who has a few words for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, town council members, and good evening, community members. You know, I felt it important to come out here today because I wanted you to see who I was. Because a lot of you don't have a lot of interaction with the higher patrol, other than seeing Mike every month here at the town council meeting. So, I wanted you to know that if you have an issue, you can come to us. Traffic safety issues, we're going to take care of it. Okay? My commitment to you is that we're going to be responsive. Because that's my commitment to the chief. When he hired me on and made me the captain here, he said, "You're going to," I live in this community, Tai, so I want you to take care of it. It's my baby. And I made him that commitment, and I'm going to share that commitment with you, and that's what I'm going to do. So, just real quickly, a couple of things that we're doing right now. We have a large contingent of senior volunteers, and I'm having them go out, and they're going out to the school zones in the mornings. And they're making sure that they're driving the black and whites. They're out there, they're making sure that the children are safe when they cross the street, make sure the parents are parking where they're supposed to park. They're not doing anything crazy, because we know that never happens, right? So, the senior volunteers are out there. And if you'd like to join, if you know anybody who's age 55 and above who would like to join our senior volunteer program, I'd love to have them. You can always use the help. We can always have more people out there driving around Altadena. It makes a difference. But also, we've got our Explorer program up and running as well. So, if you have know of any individuals that are from 15 to 21 years old that are interested in the career in law enforcement, have them come down to our office and apply, because we'd love to have them. We just got this program up and running, but we want to make sure that we give these young community members an opportunity to contribute, to learn some discipline, to take part in all of our community events, such as parades and whatnot. So, you know, we've got some good programs going, and there's still things I need to evaluate based on the operations. But the important thing was I wanted to share those little tidbits with you guys, and so you can see who I am. If you guys have any questions, or if you feel that the higher patrol is not responsive, I'm the guy. Come to me. Okay? Because there's nobody that outranks me in my office. So, if it's not going right, it's my fault. Okay? But other than that, I've got nothing else. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Councilmember Sutherland has a question for you.
For people that want to volunteer, do they need to go to the office, or call, or how should they do it?
They could do either, but if they come down to the office, they'll fill out an application. We'll do a background check, and we'll vet, we'll make sure they're vetted so they can join the program, because not everybody can join, unfortunately. But we do want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to help us out.
And the address is?
It's 2130 Windsor Avenue, right here in Altadena. Windsor and Woodbury.
Right.
Councilmember Malone?
In that program, is there any training required?
Yes.
And is there any physical abilities that you may need to have?
So, they will get whatever training that they want to do. So, as far as different duties that they can have, it depends on the person, what they want to do. Some people don't want to go out in the community. They want to just stay in the office.
Do you have to actually walk, or could you be, stay in the car? I mean, some people have trouble walking.
Correct. I understand.
I mean, there's certain tasks that, you know?
Yeah, we'll tailor the task to the individual. If they have any type of disabilities, we can also, we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Knapp?
Would you mind just spelling your name for the community?
Sure. First name is Tai, T-A-I, and then last name is Wong. It's V-O-N-G. V as in Victor.
And is there a way to communicate with you, other than just to call the station? Is there an email address that you'd want to provide, or?
Yes. Email me. That's, I obsessively check my emails, so if you want to get ahold of me?
Email.
Email me. It's just my first initial, T, and my last name, Wong, at CHP.ca.gov.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we welcome you. I know that the community is happy to put a face to the name.
Yes.
And I also saw you at the day of dialogue, so the, again, I'd like to put the emphasis that our law enforcement are really interested in having that relationship and also making the community feel comfortable. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the Altadena Sheriff's Station, Lieutenant Octave, and I think that's it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council. As always, it's always a pleasure being at the meetings. Lieutenant Carmichael Octave, assigned to Altadena Station under the direction of Captain Vicki Stuckey. Just want to give, my presentation will be relatively brief. Our overview of crime and incidents for the month of March 2018. We did have a slight increase from 35 overall to 43 crimes. The main area of increase was aggravated assaults. We had a total of six. Of those six incidents, one was domestic violence-related. The other five, there were two that were possibly related, however, that investigation is ongoing. Beyond that, there were no trends or patterns in affiliation with the rise in the crime. Our vehicle burglaries did increase also by 50% from three to six, and by burg- vehicle burglaries, vehicle larcenies, and that's thefts from locked vehicles. Our shoplifting incidents also increased from zero to five, and during those incidents, we did, several of those incidents, we did get individuals into custody. Our GTA's also increased. That's our grand theft autos, and they increased from six to eight. I am pleased to announce, however, that our robbery weapons, we had a decrease in robbery weapons, and that was from two to zero. Our robbery strong arms remained the same at one. Also pleased to announce that our, we had a decrease in residential burgs from five to four. In addition to burglary, other structures, we had increased by one from three to two. Our overall larcenies did also decrease, and that's from 14 to 10. And we also had a decrease in arson's from zero to one. Unless there's any other questions, that concludes my report. Afterwards, I will bring my captain up for a presentation to resident of the community of Altadena.
Yeah, okay, thank you. There is also, while you're coming, there is a question from Councilmember Markison.
Don't go away.
I'm here.
I didn't, I didn't see a report. I'm sure we just had a little breakdown or whatever, but for 4613, have our arrests gone up?
Our overall arrests?
For, yeah, for 4613?
Not specifically. I can't say that the arrests in general have gone up. We had a slight decrease in arrests, but that's not necessarily, you know, a bad thing. That could be an indication that there's less crime. But we do increase our presence, and whenever we do identify a crime trend, and obviously we deter crime through high visibility.
Yeah, we were, Sylvia and I were just wondering if we'd gotten some more activity in 4613. Anyway, okay.
I'll make with you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, okay, and to my fellow council members, I did receive your report, the report from the Altadena Sheriff's Station, that I did not distribute it, and that is my fault, so I take full responsibility for that. Okay? I did receive it and on time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Without further ado, I'd like to introduce my captain, Captain Vicki Stuckey.
Mr. Chair, and members of the town council, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present a certificate of appreciation to Mr. Andrew Truesdale, who's a resident of Altadena. Mr. Truesdale, if you could come stand up here with me, please? So, on the morning of Tuesday, March 13, at about 4:15 in the morning, Mr. Truesdale was on his morning walk, as he does quite frequently. This day was like many others, just on his walk, when he came across what he thought was some trash. As he got closer, he realized that it was not trash, but a gun case and a magazine laying on the sidewalk. He thought, "Why? Why is this here? Maybe someone dropped it off a load of their car." So, he placed the items in the bushes, and, let me see, where did I stop it? He placed the items in the bushes, and then he realized that maybe someone would come and, that had lost them, would return. He went home, he kind of cleaned up and began some of his chores. Then he got in his car and said, "Let me go back to this area on Woodbury to see if the items are still there." And they were. And like a good neighbor, he called Altadena Sheriff's Station, and because the number was programmed in his cellphone, he notified the desk, and our personnel responded out there. And what was in this gun case was a Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P weapon. It was a shotgun, some ammunition, and a rifle. So, I am here today to thank Mr. Truesdale for being an observant neighbor, a neighborhood walker, and notifying the Sheriff's Department of the lost items. These items could have easily and very well ended up in the wrong hands. As we always remind everyone, if you see something, say something. And that's exactly what Mr. Truesdale did on this day. And for that, I'd like to present him with a certificate of appreciation. And it reads, "Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Andrew F. Truesdale." And it kind of repeats everything that I say. So, and it's signed by myself, so I'd like to make a presentation to him, to tell him thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, again, citizens, I always remind you that if you see something unusual, you need to say something. Just give us a phone call, and we'll be out there, okay? And thank you again, Mr. Truesdale.
Thank you, Captain. And thank you, Mr. Truesdale. Okay, here is the moment, and we would like to, I already said what needed to be said, and without further ado, I would like to welcome interim chief, John Perez.
Thank you, and good evening to the residents of Altadena and to the Altadena Town Council. I thank you for this opportunity to engage the board, and I also thank you for the recent efforts in bringing our communities closer together. So, I thank you for that. For the brief moment I'm here at the mic, you know, what I'd like to do is read a letter of appreciation to the council from the Pasadena Police Department and submit it for record. So, please bear with me for a moment. So please bear with me for a moment. To the Altadena Town Council, the Pasadena Police Department is proud to acknowledge the Altadena Town Council and all its members who support the cities of Altadena, Pasadena, and the surrounding areas. Altadena is located at the heart of our great community and has a rich history of serving its community. Under your stewardship, specifically with direct invitation from Councilwoman Veronica Jones, I have personally witnessed the positive impact the days of dialogue had on our community when we discussed, our discussions, our concerns here in the community on April 11th. Mrs. Jones' passion, spirit, and tireless effort to serve our community is the foundation of your longevity. It is clear that all who witnessed that day, all the shared efforts, it was a powerful servant leadership that created a community partnership that is built on love, respect, and trust. On behalf of the men and women of the Pasadena Police Department, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you as we enhance our engagement, put higher value in partnership, and collaborate with transparency, and enrich our diverse community. So I want to thank you for the efforts recently to bring us together and to be here for everybody. I have 33 years with the Pasadena Police Department, and Altadena has been part of that home for those 33 years. I've got so many examples and stories I could share, I know I have a brief moment, but I just want to thank you for what we've done in the past and what we're going to do in the future together. So I thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you. Don't leave yet, Chief, please.
Coming back.
That was, that was very brief, and that was good. So you did, you did, you did earn your two minutes. I was just checking to see if there was any, anything from the community that was addressed to you, so give me one second.
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, there is one, and that is Nicole Moore.
Where should I be from?
I can share the mic.
Can you share?
Yes, please.
My name is Nicole Moore. I'm representing tonight, yes?
Before you start, in the interest of time, this is exceptional, so no more than two minutes.
Okay. I'm representing neighbors building a better Altadena. Of course, we're in full support of the letter that came from this council to your office and the office of Pasadena Mayor, City Manager. And we do deeply appreciate that the two officers that were involved in the Crispaloo beating have been removed from duty in this area. And we think that there's some good steps moving forward, and we look forward to working with you on the issues moving forward. The bottom line is that all of us are members of a larger community. In addition to our approach to this issue as NBBA from Altadena, most of us in this room also travel through Pasadena to get basically anywhere. And, and my concern, and it still is my concern, is that the former police chief, as well as the current city manager, have indicated that what happened with our neighbor was probably within policy. We're looking deeply to see what comes out of the internal investigation, but it's critical that if this is decided it was within policy, that the policy must change. This is not the kind of community that I can live in, that my family can live in. It was a great personal relief that those officers were removed. We do believe that those officers had also put lights in our cars several times. I don't know if it was my presence in a car full of African Americans
15 seconds.
was the reason that we weren't pulled over, but we feel much safer now, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we, we appreciate the comment, and I don't think there's any need for any response, so, thank you. Any, from the council, any comments, questions for the interim chief? Councilmember Marcusson?
I would just like to say thanks for coming. We really, really appreciate it. It's a big deal. Thank you.
All right, I believe that echoed all of this room. It was a wonderful gesture showing up here.
Thank you, and I look forward to the future, so appreciate it.
County Fire, and that will be Ms. Greiken.
Good evening, councilmembers. The statistics for the month of March, we had a total of 312 responses in Altadena. 262 of those were for medical calls, and of those patients, 203 of them did get transported to hospitals. We did have three fires. One was a structure fire on Maiden Lane, and that was a detached garage with exposures to the rear patio and one vehicle. So it did, the cause was undetermined, but it did result in about $90,000 worth of damage. We had a trash fire on Lake Avenue, and we had a vehicle fire on Rubio Crest Drive. We had a few instances of what we call hazardous condition with no fire, and that's the power lines down, or wires down, or arcing wires, or things like that. So there were a few, six instances of those, mostly power lines down. We did have 10 traffic collisions, and you have the locations of those collisions listed on the report. And I did not include anything under the announcements, items of interest, I apologize for that, but my one announcement is that brush inspections will begin in May. Currently, our firefighters are undergoing their annual brush clearance training program, which is an internal training, just refreshes everybody from year to year of what they're looking for, what regulations might have changed from one year to the next, and then in May, they will start going out and visiting all your properties and doing their brush inspections. So you will either get a clean bill of health, or a little note. And with that, that is it, unless there's any questions.
Any, okay, well, Councilmember Vega.
Hi there, just curious, and looking at the report, there was, you know, a few power lines down. I know we have windy days, but the timeline is kind of over the month. I'm just curious as to...
It's not uncommon.
Really?
Yeah.
You just have a line just?
It's not uncommon.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's not just Altadena, it's everywhere. It happens everywhere.
They're just tired.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sutherland?
I just wonder if it's my imagination, it seems like every time I turn on the news at night, there's another serious fire that I'm looking at on the news. I don't feel that we've got any increase, or significant increase here, but is it just my imagination, or am I, maybe I pay more attention in general?
You just might become a little more sensitive to it. I don't think, I don't think there's really been an increase. Are you talking about brush fires?
No, I'm talking about house fires.
Structure fires?
Structure fires, yeah.
Not in Altadena. I can tell you that, it's pretty, you know, we had one in the month of March. You know, and that's, that's really low. I mean, if we look at some other cities, they could have 10, 12 a month.
So don't let the news scare me, right?
No, don't let the news scare you. Yeah, you know, only the really big ones make it on the news, so, but, yeah, it's, there's not, it doesn't happen a lot. I mean, they go on a lot of calls. There are a lot of calls that go out for structure fires, but a lot of times they'll get there and it's a cooking fire, or it was something that happened and the fire was out on arrival, so the residents had put it out. And that's a good note for anybody, too, because even if you do, if you have a small little fire at home, and you have a fire extinguisher, and you've put it out yourself, please call us and let us come out and just make sure that you got every part of it, especially in kitchens, when maybe it got close to the wall or something, and now you won't know if it got behind the wall. And we have thermal imagers, so we can see through those walls and see if there's hotspots. So anytime you do, if you put out a fire on your own, that's great, but just call the fire department anyway, let them come out and just double-check and make sure.
Councilmember Malone?
I'm going to go back to what Councilman Vega was asking regarding the downed power lines. And you said it tended to be typical, it's typical, or it's kind of average to get that many down. But what is the major cause of a downed power line? Is it, is it the trees? Is it wind? Is it hit? Is it aging? And what can we do as a community?
It's probably a combination of all of that.
And what can we do as a community to identify those things so that we can actually maybe report it before it happens?
Well, Edison does a really good job, and they go out, but they can't be everywhere at once, but they do routinely inspect their lines, they do secure them when they see. If they weren't doing what they were doing, we would probably see a lot more of this. So, but it's hard, because there are so many of them.
So as a neighbor, if we see a tree growing over it or things like that, I mean, is that something we should report?
Yeah, and it could be, you know, after a strong windy day, you know, and it, and it just loosens a little bit. And then age, age is a big factor.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments from, or questions from council? Thank you so much. 3.5 Map Your Neighborhood, and I believe I see, okay, Mr. Van de Veld.
Good evening, town council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. And on behalf of the 11 Map Your Neighborhood community members, which of all volunteers would like to thank you, and we're all committed to preparing the city of Altadena neighborhood by neighborhood. So a brief background on the National MYN Program. Map Your Neighborhood prepares us for a disaster situation when our wonderful 911 services are not able to assist us. It, it's a nine-step program that takes, that takes place following a disaster. The first six steps teach us what to do to take care of ourselves, our family, and our property. The final three steps teach us how to come together with our neighbors, and to outreach, and to, to find out just all the skills that you have, all the equipment that you have that might be able to help everybody deal with a disaster. We also teach personal preparedness as well. Since we started tracking Map Your Neighborhood stats in Altadena, we have completed many community facilitator training sessions that empower individuals to host and train their own neighborhoods. All community trainings are free of charge, and I'd like to thank Altadena Town and Country Club for being a good partner to us and providing us with a place to hold our trainings. Our next training is scheduled for Sunday, May 20th, and it's from 4 o'clock until 6 o'clock. Okay, so to date, we have 422 facilitators trained here in Altadena, and that represents also 1,112 households that are included in those neighborhoods. So it's, it's a little over 7% of the 15,000 households here in Altadena, and our goal is to get at least 10%. So I think we're well on our way. So if you'd like any more information regarding Altadena Map Your Neighborhood, please email us at mynrsvp@gmail.com. And if you are on Facebook, we are on Facebook, and that's www.facebook.com/altmyn, A-L-T-M-Y-N. So if you are interested in joining us, please give us, contact us. We are also welcoming any volunteers to the community, to the committee, so please, if you're interested, get involved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Van de Veld? Okay, Councilmember Jones?
The May 20th meeting, where is the location?
It's at Altadena Town and Country Club.
Oh, it's there, okay.
Okay, thank you so much, sir.
Oh, and just one other thing, if you don't, if you don't make it to the May 20th meeting, we will have another meeting in July, and so it's like every other month, we'll have meetings.
Thank you. General public comment, we do have quite a few, so we, we will strictly limit you to, to two minutes. So do I have anybody who is going to help with the timing? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, it was brought to my attention that Mr. Lauret Clash was here for quite some time, so we'd like to bring him up right away. Okay, and again, we, we appreciate you coming, you were very prompt, a 6 o'clock prompt.
Well, thank you, thank you, town council. I'm gonna back into this, and it'll be really brief. On September 11th, my neighbor had, had some guys that tried to kick in her door at 12 a.m. at night, and we're in the morning. She called the police as well, she called the sheriffs, as well as the neighbor across from her called the sheriffs. Nobody showed up. And recently, there's been a lot of boys from the Sycamore area that have been hanging out in the area, and there's another neighbor. I asked the neighbors to come up, but both of them were preoccupied. But it appears that some of the boys from the Sycamore area are getting out, and the other neighbor said that someone broke into his home and stole a lot of little small items, headphones and stuff like that, so he's pretty sure it's kids. And the reason why I'm here tonight, obviously, is not to complain, but just air out the concern, and also, I shared the letter with Dr. Thomas from Allies, the Association for the Law and Sheriff's Deputies, that is going out now and asking for more recruitment and more retention for the sheriff's deputies, so we can get more people in our area. So Dr. Thomas said that she would definitely share that with the committee, and I'm looking forward for just, again, just for more coverage, because I'd say a couple of years ago, there were sheriffs all over Casitas, but now I don't see them that often. So that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the information, and I'm quite sure that the sheriff's captain and the, all the other law enforcements in the area have taken notice. Okay, moving forward, I cannot call a lot of them together three at a time. I also see that, hold on one moment.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chair, councilmembers, community members, this Saturday, Altadena Heritage is having a workday at Old Marengo Park. This is a park that used to be a vacant piece of land that was formed when Marengo south of Woodbury was redirected to meet up with Marengo north of Woodbury. So there's a triangular area that used to be weeds, and about 12 years ago, someone on the town council began a program to develop that land and got funding, and Heritage and Arroyo's and Foothills Conservancy maintain that park now. It was landscaped and planted, and now it's volunteers who take care of it. It's county land, but volunteers take care of it. So I'm inviting any of you who are interested in gardening and helping out to come out Saturday at 9:00. Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. Felipe?
Correa.
Okay, Correa, okay. Bus Route 88?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, councilpeople.
Good evening.
I believe Malone and you are my area. We had a tranquil neighborhood until this. If you give it a second. Every Saturday and Sunday for eight hours a day, twice on the hour, this is what I hear and my neighbors. Okay? That's what we hear, brakes. Bus brakes from that new bus route 88. Now, my question to the council is, was there an environmental study on the impact of buses in our area? Towards the wildlife? Was there a survey conducted to the residents? We did not receive anything in the mail pertaining to this, saying that there was going to be a bus route so we could come and give our verbal agreement or disagreement. And you two are, I believe, my council, since I'm on 386 East Loma Alta, which is Cannon and Loma Alta. You guys should send out immediately a flyer to see who is for and against, because the majority of my neighbors are totally against having buses run up and down. I was told that this was going to lower traffic. Traffic is the same. If anything, it's worse. And brake noise is caused by overheating. My background is mechanical my whole life. And I can tell you right now, this is an accident waiting to happen. Those brakes are going to overheat, and a bus is going to lose control, and one of those buses is going to be in somebody's neighbor. And then I want to go on record, so then when KCal comes to mine, I says, I went to my town council. And then they're going to come and ask you guys the same questions. Why wasn't there an environmental study pertaining to this? That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right.
Cory, can we make sure that it's clear to everybody that if they would like an answer back or contact back, that they make sure that they put their contact information? I'm sorry, okay. Can we make sure that everybody that's doing public comment, if they would like a town council person to contact them back again after the meeting? Because we do not respond to public comment, but we can respond afterwards, to make sure that they put their contact information on the comment cards, because we have found that they do not. So if, you know, if the gentleman would like to have a discussion later, that Billy and you get in contact with him, then you need to have a way to contact him, if you don't already.
Yeah, thank you so much for that update. I think we should continuously emphasize this, that when people fill out these forms, that they allow us the opportunity to reach out back to them. Because if we don't have a way to contact them, we wouldn't be able to respond back to them. Okay? Why are you looking for that? Let me...
Chana?
Okay.
Sorry, I, that's a very long name.
Basically, the same concern, and if this is related to the traffic, or the neighbors complaining about the hikers parking, I think we need to find a better way to do this. There are a few parking lots around the area, the Farnsworth Park parking lot and so forth. Instead of running a bus, I think the best option might be to either do that, and then there's a dirt area in the park itself, the hiking area itself, and probably can hold 150 cars. That may be the way to go. So that's, I just want to raise that concern.
Thank you so much. And next person is Paul Lane.
Good evening, Town Council. I too want to speak about the bus traffic that we now have on Loma Alta Drive. I have lived in Altadena since I was five years old. And my mother is here with me, and she has lived in her same house for close to 60 years now. And that is at the corner of Loma Alta Drive and Cannon. So Phil and Chana have both told you about our disappointment that we now have buses going up down our street and the noise that we hear as these buses pass. So the chairman spoke about progressive ideas and community engagement. So the questions I have are, whose idea was this? And how does it benefit Altadena? Because as one of my neighbors has already said, the traffic is now going up onto side streets. And there has been, if you look on that bus, there's nobody on that bus. The other issue that you brought up was community engagement. And as Chana and Phil have both said, we were not engaged at all. We do not know what you all's deliberation was on this issue. We don't know how Pasadena City is involved, and why are they directing what happens and goes on in Altadena because they have the metro line? We also have questions about, why isn't the bus going to Eaton Canyon instead of the top of the Merrill Trail? So, and again, we were not contacted. I have provided our contact information, and we are expectant that we will receive answers to our questions. The final question is, who decides it becomes a permanent project rather than what is now called a pilot project? And we'd like to know the timing of that, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you. It's been a while.
I know, it's been a while. I've been in parks in Altadena. I'm Harold Charles. I'm a resident of Altadena. I live near the corner of Cannon and Loma Alta. The buses, why? I mean, you know, we want notified. I've been doing a lot of neighborhood work for the last 30 years throughout all of the parks in Altadena. I mean, we've brought millions of dollars to change the communities, help a lot of people. But we've tried to tolerate, like, the hikers, you know, at times, but some of the neighbors just can't deal with it. And then now with the buses coming, and then with my neighbor showing you guys the video, there could be some serious problems. And one of my questions I have is that, was this funded by Supervisor Barker? Does she have anything to do with the funding?
Probably.
Really? Okay. I just sent her a video, because I also do volunteer work in one of the parks with the tennis courts. I sent her a video, and immediately when she got it, she sent people out from Parks and Rec the next day. So Phil, if you want to send that video to her, okay? I'm with you on that, okay? So I don't want to be too much longer, but the fact is, we need to do something about that, okay? So my address is there. I didn't put my email address on there, but I'll accept mail or whatever, you know. And if you guys want to meet or whatever with the neighbors, we'd be more than like, I mean, happy to get together with you.
Can I, I'm not responding to the comment, I just want to make a comment.
Councilmember Markison?
Thank you. Just for general information, this, as you can see, this meeting is recorded. And a copy goes to the supervisor's office, and her office watches the meetings on the video. So they will be able to see all of your public comments tonight when the video is completed. Just an FYI. That'll go down to them as well.
Well, good. Thank you. That helps. Okay, I'm done. I think there are other members coming up.
Thank you so much. And the next person will be...
Thank you for having me here tonight. I was just, I'm coming from, The River Project, which is a nonprofit in the Los Angeles River. And I just wanted to inform people that we are doing a program over the next few months, which will be to capture water and conserve water on private properties. And so part of my announcement or ask is if anyone's interested. I have some flyers, and I'm in the back, and we're looking to pair with community organizations or residents that are interested, or local organizations, to get the word out about these technologies and just really teach. And we'll be doing some free workshops to teach how things are going and to educate about different strategies that you can do on a lawn that will help conserve water. And we'll also, we have some funding from the county as well to do some implementations on qualified neighborhoods, neighborhoods, or I mean, sorry, residences in Altadena. So if you're interested, please talk to me. And I forgot to put my contact information, so I will do that, and I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm not sure if Granny, if you wanted to, is this regular public comment?
Yes, regular public comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you, the dialogue. You did an excellent job. I hope you have more, because that was just the beginning. And figure a place so more people can come, because I think it will really help, but you know how I feel about that. And the other thing, I just have a question. Are there terms when you're coming to town council, or is there a time there's an election you're just getting elected? I just wanted to know.
There are no term limits.
Okay, never mind the question, please. You're not saying it's mine or your question.
Okay. All right. That should be all that I have. The other two is 5.1 and 7.3. Okay, well, that will close the general public comments, and we will go into special presentation. And item number 5.1, that is the transit to trails.
Lucky you.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Lopez Ledesma, and I'm with the Wilderness Society. I hate that I'm giving people my back, but I also need to get to my slides and read off of them, so I apologize for the inconvenience. So, good evening to the members of the public. This is an amazing turnout. This is my first time at the Altadena Town Council, and I'm thoroughly impressed. So again, Yvette with the Wilderness Society, we are one of the nonprofit partners that are working on this Route 88. And our mission as an organization, we're a national conservation organization that works to protect places like the San Gabriel Mountains, the wilderness, and also to provide access to all communities equitably, so that people can enjoy these public spaces that exist for everyone. Some info on the line, I definitely took note of all of your comments, even though it's not necessarily our project to lead, but definitely our project to support. I can pass those on to the higher-ups. And, you know, my information will be on the last slide, so if you have a, you know, pen, paper handy, I don't have any business cards, I just started not so long ago, but you can take my contact information, reach out to me, and however I can be helpful in getting that, those concerns out to the powers that be, I will do so. So again, Pasadena Transit Route 88 is a special route traveling between the Metro Gold Lang Station at Memorial Park. And it comes up here to the Sam Merrill Trailhead in Altadena, as you all know. Travel time to the trailhead is about 23 minutes. And it leaves every half hour, as the gentleman mentioned. You do see it every half hour. Go northbound Raymond and Holly, at the Raymond and Holly bus stop, between 7:05 a.m. and 4:35 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. The last bus will depart the trailhead at 5:00 p.m. And the Sam Merrill Trailhead is the access point to, as you know, Echo Mountain and Inspiration Point Trails. It is a limited pilot. It is six months, started in April, and it will end at the last weekend of September. And for more information, more detailed information, there's our phone number here that you can call with the city of Pasadena, and that's 626-744-4055. And then there's also a link, but it's probably not the easiest, but I can definitely share it if you would like that. I can share that information with the town council members, and they can help disseminate that. Just some background information on why this route, why this project. So the county has studied a regional park need over the past couple of years. And, you know, as you can see, the areas in green is all very rich in park space, rich in open space. And the areas in red are the areas that have less access, hardly any access to open space and parks. This needs assessment was really identified, it really identified the need to connect regions to open space. And again, it's not just the county that identified the regional needs, but also the Southern California Association of Governments, the Regional Transportation Plan. It highlighted the need to connect to the San Gabriel Mountains. And so this is just a map of their area, their planning region, and it's made up of six different counties. So this is what the route looks like. I'm sorry if the image isn't as sharp on the screen, but it starts off at the Memorial Park Station on Raymond and Holly, goes northbound up to Walnut, where then makes a right. It goes a left on Marengo, a left on Orange Grove, a right on Fair Oaks, and then all the way up till it gets to Loma, I'm sorry, to Altadena, makes a right, and then a left on Lake and drops people off there, where you've seen in front of the trailhead. And so on its way out, it just goes down Loma Alta, back down Fair Oaks, back to Orange Grove, to Marengo, Walnut, and Raymond. So this route was, it was based also just on other regional transportation needs that exist, and were identified also by the County of LA Department of Public Works and Altadena Transit Need Study. And so other, you know, one of the questions that was asked was related to, how is this benefiting Altadena? And so this is one of the ways it seeks to benefit community members in Altadena, in particular, community members that are transit-dependent. This route serves a population of about 17,094 people within a quarter mile, in a place where 16.2 of the households don't have cars. And, I'm sorry? I can get that information for you, you know, I mean, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. And the poverty rate at the time of the study was taken showed a level of poverty of 22%. So this project also aims to serve as a transit route on the weekends for people that might need access to a transit hub like Memorial Park Station, to run errands, to go to different doctor's offices, to do things that need to get done on the weekends when we're so busy, you know, living our lives and working Monday to Friday. Maybe people that work on the weekends that need to also get to work. So it's multiple purposes here. For the other benefits that this project is bringing to the trailhead in particular, this new signage was installed, and this is some of our staff and our team here, working to improve the site with new trailhead improvements, new signage. That also tells the story of the site. And also, one thing we're trying to do, in particular, also on the buses themselves as they are coming up to the trailhead, is really to provide some background and some etiquette on how people can be more considerate and careful when they get to the area and when they're on their hike. This is my final slide, but I will repeat, this is a six-month pilot, and we are collecting data and input on it. The survey and the evaluation, like I mentioned, also includes info on some trail etiquette. And then I encourage community feedback, we all encourage community feedback for this project. My information is here, my email address. And it's my first name, Yvette, Y-V-E-T-T-E underscore Lopez, it's a long last name, sorry. That's what I get for getting married. Lopez Ledesma, L-O-P-E-Z-L-E-D-E-S-M-A at tws.org. Do not hesitate to contact us, we understand this is your community, and we really want to see this as a benefit. We don't, I don't like to hear that this is a headache, but the reality is, is that it's a challenging, it's a challenging lunch. but the reality is, is that it's a challenging, it's a challenging launch, but we really hope that it really brings a lot of benefit to people in Altadena, in Pasadena, all over the region that can really come and appreciate the beautiful open space that you have here in your backyard. Thank you.
Counsel member Marcusson has a question.
Hold on, hold on, I gotta...
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Didn't, didn't throw it around though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell me when. Okay, okay. Now that you've heard about the brakes on the buses, is that something that could be looked into right away? And if not, you, who would we talk to about that? Because that is annoying.
Yeah, I can definitely bring that up to Pasadena Transit since they're, they're the ones operating the buses. We don't operate the buses. Like I said, we're just a, a partner on it. My presentation mostly informational, but I'm hearing the concerns and I will make note to let them know that this is a, you know, is a big concern.
Well, a, a big concern and quite frankly, in my opinion, if that's a problem, it'll blow up your pro, your project. They should be able to have better brakes.
Yeah. Thank you. Taken. Note taken. Any other questions?
Dr. Carmen, you had the...
Yes. So, I'm thinking of the hike, they're on the bus for 23 minutes and maybe rode Gold Rail for 20 minutes before that, then he can station, then he arrives at the Trailhead or he arrives at the Trailhead and then maybe goes hiking for two hours and then gets back on the bus and maybe has to ride another hour. I think you really need to have porta potties up there. Because I, I think it's a, a person driving to the Trailhead, he stops at a gas station, you know, close to the Trailhead at, at their convenience, but you have people riding transit to go that far to hike and then hike for a few hours. To make it really usable, I think you need to have porta potties. And also, at the Trailhead, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to have trash cans and that, that go through any Trailhead. I see a trash problem at the entrance, the hindrance entrance to the Eden Canyon, that Trailhead. There's people don't use diapers in the bushes in that area and there's no, no trash in that area. So, I think those two things would make it more look a bit better.
So, for those that didn't hear the concerns, the concerns were around restrooms and around the presence of trash receptacles. And for restrooms, yes, I understand that that is a, that is a challenge. And, you know, if there's nearby facilities such as parks perhaps, maybe that people can go walk down to a park and use maybe a restroom there. But people are, you know, the outreach to being done is pretty explicit about, about the facilities that exist and don't exist. And, and what we're seeing or what we saw in the first weekend is that the people that were coming out are people that are already familiar with, with that trail. So they, they know what they're getting themselves into, but I definitely will take that comment. And also about the trash receptacles, it's really important. Yeah, I know, I, I definitely know, living near open space myself, I know how, how important it is to make sure that those are visible and accessible. So I can report that back to the park as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Okay, and that's all that we have. We certainly appreciate you coming and is, is better...
I have a question. Sorry to interrupt. She said that she was going to check with MTA about the brakes. My lifetime is mechanical and I can tell you right now, the brakes are ceramic and they are, the reason they are ceramic, and this is for the record, that they squeak because the buses are too big, because they're commercial and they heat. You can change the brakes all you want and because of the weight, the squeak will not go away. You can try to get a pad, which they have, MTA has tried, because this has turned off because I'm understanding.
Sir, we appreciate all that information. It's something that you can take outside of the room with the presenter. I'm sure they'll be happy to entertain that. Okay. Again, any questions from council? Okay. So, again, thank you for coming and we are glad that you came and it is better late than ever. We wish we were a little bit ahead of this, but it is what it is. So, do your very best. If you need to communicate with council, please do so. If there's something that we need to put on the website, we can all work together to make sure that the community is well-served.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Again, thank you. All right.
Thank you. And thank you, Pat, for, for, for the time and communication to get this going. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Item number 5.2, and that's the update on the Devil's Gate Reservoir Sediment Removal and I would like to have Mr. George Delao and Veronica Mardis.
Hi, good evening, town council members and residents of the community. My name is George Delao. I'm with the LA County Department of Public Works and with me is Veronica Mardis. We're going to go ahead and give that update on the Devil's Gate Reservoir Sediment Removal and Management Project. I'm going to give an overview of what we're going to be doing and then Veronica will be talking about the specific mitigation and enhancements that we're going to be doing within the Hahamanga Watershed Park itself. So, you know, earlier today, we were talking about some of the fires and, you know, why do those happen? And sometimes things just happen. We, as, as residents in the San Gabriel Valley, we're blessed with this view of these San Gabriel Mountains here, but every once in a while, they do catch fire. And the, the hillside scorched, wildlife is threatened and their habitat is burned. In addition to that, that, that soil there changes its characteristics. And when we get storms after those fires, a lot of that sediment comes down along with that debris from, you know, the ashes. And that's what happened in 2009 with the station fire when, when a good percentage of that watershed was burned. And with the subsequent storms, we had over 1.3 million cubic yards of sediment that came down into the Devil's Gate Reservoir. It's taking up a lot of the capacity that was needed to hold back the floodwaters to protect that lower community on the Arroyo Seco. We estimate that we've got about 650 parcels downstream and next to the Arroyo Seco that could be flooded by a major storm. And that's, that includes 447 homes and businesses within those parcels. So, what we've done at the, at the county is worked diligently to develop a project to remove 1.7 million cubic yards of that sediment in that reservoir that's basically taking up that space. The project is going to be, is going to go for, for a total of four years. And, you know, within that watershed park, the Flood Control District actually has an easement for flood purposes of 258 acres. But our excavation is only going to take up about 64 acres of that, of that area. And at the end of that project, we're also going to have an area that's going to be designated as a, a permanent management area. And that's going to be 41 acres. And what that's going to be is that every year, this is a smaller area that we're going to go in and take out any new vegetation that grows, take out any new sediment that comes in. And so we hope that this will help to reduce the chances, the likelihood that we'll have to have another such a large cleanout. If we do something every year to keep this reservoir clean, we should be able to have the capacity to protect those properties downstream. So, we, we hope to start the project this October. However, if we don't get our permits, we're going to need to start it in October of, of 2019. And the reason for that is, is that we need to do our vegetation removal, removal of the trees and vegetation that's within the reservoir between October and January 30th, as it is outside of the bird nesting season. And then the actual removal of the sediment would begin in April and go through the end of November. And we would do that every year for that timeframe for up to the four years. Now, we understand that some of the community, concerns from the community have been the number of trucks that are going to need to go through the neighborhood. So we've done a couple of things to help kind of alleviate some of those or help mitigate. We can't eliminate, obviously, those trucks, but we're going to limit the hauling hours from 7 o'clock in the morning to 3:30 p.m. in the afternoon. We're also going to avoid the residential areas. So we're going to be going off of Main, that Main Street Oak Grove on the southern part of the dam. And to be able to do that, we're actually going to construct a new access road on the east side of the dam. And then on the west side of the dam, we have a current access road. And what we're going to do on that one is we're going to widen it out a little bit and then we're also going to pave that first portion there. And that'll help get the trucks into the reservoir a little quicker on the east side and then out on the west, so for the traffic flow. We're also going to balance the truck traffic between the two cities, Lockenada Flint Ridge and the City of Pasadena. And we're also going to try to minimize the impact to the schools. There's multiple schools on the west side. So in the morning, early morning, we'll have the truck traffic between 7 and 10 o'clock, go on the east side, the Pasadena side. And then past 10 o'clock, they'll come into the reservoir on the Pasadena side, but go out the Lockenada side. And then that'll be during the, the school year. And then during summer break, it'll be all on the Lockenada side to balance out for, for the two cities. And we're also going to prevent our trucks from parking in the city streets or even idling or staging. Everything's going to need to be done within the reservoir. And then for emissions, we are requiring that the vehicles, the trucks used our 2010 model year emissions. And, and then regarding the trail closures. So one of the things, you know, we know that there's a lot of people that like to watch the wildlife there, the bird watching, their sequestering use, cyclists, bikers, runners that use the Hahamanga Watershed Park. We're trying to limit the closure of the trails as much as possible. Most of the perimeter trail will be open. However, that southern part, including the tunnel unfortunately, we're going to have those trucks coming in and out of there quite a bit and we're really concerned about the safety of residents. So we are going to need to close the trail during the time that they're going to be working there. But they're only going to be working there Monday through Friday. And again, from those hours hauling from 7 to 3:30. They will be not, they will not be working there on holidays or Rose Bowl events and events such as that that would have a lot of attendance. There might be a need when we're constructing the access roads for a few days to close the, the trails overnight. And that would be for, again, for safety reasons if when they're, they're doing some kind of excavation where they're, you know, somebody could potentially trip and fall within that area. So we may need to close it overnight for that brief period of time. But other than that, they'll be open on all the holidays, weekends and after the working hours. And lastly, before I turn it over to Veronica, I wanted to mention that we are also evaluating the, the status of the roads. We want to see what kind of shape they are in right now. So, everything on the Pasadena and Lockenada side. And we are going to be working with the two cities so that afterwards we can go and make any needed repairs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Veronica.
Good evening. So I'm going to be talking about some of the habitat restoration that will take place on-site within Devil's Gate Reservoir and Hahamanga Watershed Park. Unfortunately, with the sediment removal, we do have to remove vegetation. So we're going to be looking to overall enhance the vegetation surrounding our annual maintenance area, which again is 41 acres within the, the reservoir. And then around the annual maintenance area, there will be seven acres of, the side slopes into the basin will be vegetated with shrub, scrub type vegetation. And then around that, we're doing approximately 70, a little bit more than 70 acres of habitat restoration and creation within the reservoir. This is all consistent with the Hahamanga Watershed Master Plan that was approved by the City of Pasadena. And I want to mention that all of the official walking trails and sequestering trails within the basin will be maintained once the mitigation is implemented. The objectives of the habitat restoration are to enhance the recreational opportunities, restore habitat to attract diverse wildlife and create high-quality nesting habitat for the Leesbells Vireo and the southwestern willowfly catcher, which are endangered and threatened species, I'm sorry, bird species that have been seen in the area. The current habitat conditions within the reservoir are degraded. There's a lot of invasive species and exotic plant, plant life. And that comes from sediment deposition within the basin, disturbance from humans and then also drought conditions. So what our goal is to go in and remove all of the exotic species and replace that with native habitat. The main exotics that you'll find within the basin are perennial pepper weed, poison hemlock, and then mustard grasses. And that outcompetes the native habitat within the basin and it, it doesn't let it establish. And if we don't go in and remove the invasives, they're just going to continue to spread and it's going to continue to degrade. So, some of the, the target areas that we're looking at within the basin are on the east side and then also on the west side of our permanent maintenance area. So on the east side of the permanent maintenance area, there's Johnson Field, which is the most southern percolation, percolation basin from the Arroyo Seco Spreading Grounds. It's no longer being used as a spreading ground. We are going to turn that into a wetland or wetland-type habitat. And then there is also the Lower Altadena Drain, which is on the east side of the basin closer to the dam. There is a storm drain that lets out from the surrounding areas. There's a lot of trash that comes in and we're going to try to make a treatment wetland in that area. So it'll improve the, the water quality before the water is, moves into the basin and then released from the dam. And then also along the east side of the reservoir, there will be overall habitat improvements and exotic removals. Same with on the west side, overall habitat improvement and exotic removals. There is an area that is currently a wetland on the west side. It's, we call it the former mining pit. It's kind of a depressional area. It's just south of the plateau where there's a disc golf hole at the top and it's just full of invasives. So we're going to take all the invasives out and replant with what should be in a wetland area native. And then there will be drainage improvements along the west side to make little streams to feed all of the mitigation area with the water that comes into that from the surrounding areas. And then, like I said, just overall exotic removals. And then the last area is the upstream area, the most northern part of our sediment removal area. We have to remove sediment from that area initially, but then once we remove it, our intention is to never touch it again. So we're going to restore that area with what's natural to that type of vegetation, which is alluvial fan sage scrub. Hopefully, this will enhance the overall vegetation within the basin, attract more wildlife, provide better habitat for the wildlife, including those sensitive species. those sensitive species. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Vega?
I have a few questions for George.
Could you please repeat the months again? I know I heard four years, but can you repeat the months again?
We, we hope to start the project in October, and vegetation would be removed between October and January 30th. And then, that would be followed by the removal of the sediment itself from April through the end of November.
Okay.
And that would be for the four years. So, that's-
So, from October to January, and then from April to November?
Yes.
Okay.
October to January, that's just one time.
One time?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is, you had said seven AM to eight, to three thirty. Is that Monday through Friday?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know about how many number of trucks per day we're talking about?
Between four hundred and four twenty-five round trips.
Four hundred to four twenty-five trucks a day?
Round trip.
So, that's what we analyzed in our EIR is a maximum number of trucks. We've looked at the, taking the sediment to where we're taking it in Irwindale and Sun Valley, and it's most likely that it's going to be closer to under three hundred.
Okay. And my last question, I know Councilmember Malone has a question also. Is there a way for us to get a map of that route? Because you mentioned to the east or the west-
Yeah.
But to really have an understanding of how that is impacting Altadena?
Yeah. So, that, that map is, is online. If you, it's on our website, which is www.doublesgateproject.com. And then, we also have an email, which is doublesgateproject@dpw dot, sorry, sorry. So, so, so sorry.
I don't write that fast.
Doublesgateproject-
You know this is a Dundee environment.
-at dpw.lacounty.gov. And if you have any trouble finding anything on our website, go ahead and send us an email. I can send that to you.
Yeah, and on that website, we have, we also have all the environmental impact report documents, and there's a lot of maps and explanation of the project within that document also.
I have a question following on from Councilmember Vega. There's two communities impacted, which is La Cuenyada and Altadena, on either side of Devil's Gate. Do we know the percentage of trucks going between each community? Is it fair, or are we going to get most of the trucks in Altadena?
So, we actually, this is the reason why we have all the trucks in the summer months go to Berkshire, which is in Altadena, I mean, sorry, La Cuenyada. And that's to offset the mornings during the school months, which are using Altadena. So, I did the calculations. I can tell you, it's, it's pretty fair.
It's pretty fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
Yes, George, explain to me how the trucks are going to get to the sediment removal site. I know you talked about Oak Grove, but are they coming up the two-ten freeway? Or how are they-
Yes, they'll be coming along the two-ten freeway either from, if they're coming from the east, if they just went to our sediment placement site in Irwindale, or if they're coming from, from the west, if they're came back from Sun Valley, the inert landfills over there. They would get off on Windsor, go north, and then make a left on Oak Grove. And then, as soon as you go through there, there's going to be a new entrance-
Right.
-that will go right into that, the reservoir there. Then, they'll go down into the reservoir, fill up the trucks, and they're going to come out the west side. There's a, it's, sometimes it's a little difficult to see, because when you're driving by, you're kind of looking one way, but there's a, there's a road on the west side that comes out through there. It's a dirt road. And that's the one that will have partially paved, and then the trucks will be coming out from there.
And where will they re-enter the freeway?
And then, they would re-enter the freeway. So, if it's in the morning, they would come back on Oak Grove and go back to Windsor. We're going to actually change some of the lanes on there. I think that's what you're thinking about right now, and there's a little-
There's no room to accommodate a lot of trucks getting on the freeway at that exchange.
It's a two-lane road right there. Yeah.
You're going to have-
Right. And then, so that's the morning-
Four hundred to four hundred and twenty-five trucks. These trucks are going to be bumper-to-bumper.
It's about a, a, a little less than, like, about a minute.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, we don't anticipate to have four hundred and twenty-five trucks a, a day.
So, that's the maximum that we analyzed for the, under the environmental impact report. The project initially was going to be a little bit larger. We're going to be at two-point-four million cubic yards, and we're down to the one-point-seven, so.
Councilmember Knapp?
I just wanted to comment that today before our meeting, I received the informational update regarding the two meetings for the public. My concern is that both of them are downtown. And it's surprising to me that we're holding reservoir sediment removal meetings for the most impacted area in downtown LA. So, is there any opportunity to have a public meeting here?
So-
I know we've had them here, but now we-
So, in, in, at the end of 2017, in October, we actually had a public meeting in this building.
And I was here. I was here.
Right. So, the two meetings in Los Angeles came from our board, board motion. Our supervisor, Solis, for District One, she requested that we had additional meetings in her district. And that's why we had the additional meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Okay.
We have coordination with vector control, so if there would be any mosquito issue, we would be able to take care of it. Well, we don't anticipate more mosquitoes.
Okay, that's all. Okay.
Is there a public comment? I'm sorry, if I missed it, I apologize. It's been a lot of information. When, is there a plan to, when to start this?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to start this October.
Of this year? Of this year?
Correct. Correct. But, we don't know if we're going to obtain the last few permits on time. So, if that's the case, then we would need to start next year.
October of next year. Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Clarification?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to get clarification on the number of trucks. Did you say four hundred and twenty-five individual trucks, or is this four hundred and twenty-five round trips?
Yeah. So, it's going to be four hundred and twenty-five round trips. So, it'll probably be maybe fifty individual trucks making, yeah, round trips.
Okay. I don't have a, any comment, public comment from you?
Corey, if you'd like, I can, I can talk to them outside.
Yeah, let, let, let's do that. I just want to make sure we get the, the council. Hold on. The, the council, any, any other questions from the council? Okay, since it's only one, we're going to make a exception. Go ahead.
Since you are pouring some additional concrete, who's going to make sure it's not dangerous for equestrians or other trail users?
Was your question that if we're pouring additional concrete, who's going to make sure that-
It's a safe surface for equestrians and other trail users, because it's going to cross paths, you know, the west corner, right?
On the west side? Correct. It's, so, right there, there's already, the perimeter trail's already paved. So, from that perimeter trail up to the road, that's the part that we're going to pave. We're not going to pave the one to the-
It'll be in the basin, it'll be in that little pocket area that's just a part of our road.
Yes, I believe so. Wait. It's from, from Oak Grove down to the perimeter trail. And then, to the north of that downstream, it's going to remain natural.
Okay, thank you so much, and that should be it for us. The next item. We did have public comments in that. Okay, special presentation, and that will be myself.
She's the one doing that.
She's trying to get her mic on.
Thank you. Trooper Rachel Hilliard, President of the Buffalo Soldiers and Ninth and Tenth Horse Cavalry Association, San Diego Chapter, is before us this evening to pay tribute to the US Army soldiers who courageously fought for freedom in America throughout the world. In honor of the hundred-and-fifty-second anniversary, Trooper Rachel Hilliard is sharing the legacy of the Buffalo Soldiers and saluting the original soldiers who served at the last post of the Tenth Cavalry in Campo, California. Following the presentation, Altadena resident and one of the oldest living Buffalo Soldiers, Trooper Bruce Edwards Dennis will be recognized. Ready and forward, Trooper Rachel Hilliard.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, City Council and the community. I'm honored to be invited to give a presentation about the Buffalo Soldiers. It's a history that's not well-told. Not everyone is aware of the Buffalo Soldiers, but I assure you, if you knew of them, you'd be proud. So, here I am today to give you a little history about the Buffalo Soldiers. In eighteen sixty-six, Congress decided to pass an act by which they created two cavalry and four infantry units. Now, those units were all consisted of African-Americans, and back then, Negroes, some slaves and some free men. This was a very difficult time for the Civil War, where a lot of people, men, women, fighting, had lost their lives. The US Army replenished with those Negro slaves, and that's how the Ninth and Tenth Horse Cavalry began. Now, it wasn't just the Ninth and Tenth Horse Cavalry. There were four other infantry units that were created. And then, a little bit long, later in, in history, they created additional units. Now, those slaves were not given the best of horses or rations or clothing, but they read it, rather represent the United States by pledging and committing their lives to doing the best they could. Now, their tasks were not easy. They were charged with building forts, protecting the settlers from east coast to west coast. And we remember when they said, "Go west, young man." Well, we ended up here in California from the gold rush. Now, San Diego is important in history because this is the last site right outside of San Diego called Campo, that the Tenth Cavalry lived before going on to Cuba. And that was after the World War II. I'm going to pause for a moment, because while I am giving you history that we all should know about, today, I'm honored to bring with me living history with that of Trooper Dennis. And Trooper Dennis is a representation of the Tenth Cavalry. Next to Trooper Dennis is Trooper Jones. And Trooper Jones' father was also with the Tenth Cavalry in Campo. So, I'm quite honored to be in both of their presence. And I'm stopping to, because I want to recognize them before I go on, but the importance of what they did, not knowing they have committed to doing something so powerful, so innocent, and so heartfelt, is just amazing. I don't know if I could have done it, but I'll give you a little bit more about the Tenth Cavalry, which I'm quite proud of. So, today, we have the Ninth and Tenth Horse Cavalry Association. It's a national organization where there are twenty-seven chapters. I represent the San Diego Chapter, and I'm the president there. Trooper Jones and Trooper Dennis are members of the Los Angeles Chapter. Now, while there was over a hundred and eighty thousand that were serving in the Army, not all of them were considered Buffalo Soldiers. Those that were in the service from eighteen sixty-six to the early nineteen-hundreds were only considered Buffalo Soldiers, but they had to be in a, a particular war or status. And Trooper Dennis or Jones might be able to elaborate on that a little later. But for time constraints, I want to give you a couple pointers about, or information about the Buffalo Soldiers. That is not well-told, or not told to many people that do know a little bit about the Buffalo Soldiers. They rode black horses. Now, the reason why they rode black horses is because they could see the enemy from afar, which makes sense to me. You know, you don't have to put up a red flag. You can see in a distance. The other thing is, do you remember when they said, "It's a man's world"? Well, it wasn't, and it still isn't. There was one female, and her name was William Cathy. I represent William Cathy, and perhaps if I come again to the City Council, I'll do a monologue for you, which is quite interesting, funny, but heartfelt as well. I think I'm, am I close to my time? No? Darn. We're going to be able to ask Trooper Jones and Trooper Dennis questions later, but I'm sure you must have some questions about the history and how we got here. One of the things I do want to tell you about is after they had served their time, the Buffalo Soldiers, they went back home and picked up where they left off at their homes or started anew with families. Somewhere around nineteen sixty or seventies, some of the members that were part of the Buffalo Soldiers decided to have a reunion. And in doing so, that's how we came up, they came up with the name of the Ninth and the Tenth Horse Cavalry Association. Now, today, we still celebrate the legacy of the Buffalo Soldiers. And I shared this anniversary that's coming up with Mrs. Matthews, and I'm today inviting all of you to be a part of this. I brought one of the registration packages. This is something that we want everyone to know. That's our goal for us establishing the chapters, is to share information, to bring in descendants, and many people have written books. But, one of the things that's really moving about the Buffalo Soldiers is that we have a reunion every year, not every two years, every year. San Diego has been given the opportunity to host the hundred-and-fifty-second anniversary, and that's an, an amazing feat. It happens in the last week in July, and the public is invited. If you come to the reunion, not only will you be able to see some of our living history and meet some of our original Buffalo Soldiers such as Trooper Dennis, but you'll be able to ride along and share stories with us and learn about why we are committed to this. And the stories of the Buffalo Soldiers, they all have a story, just like you. You all have a story. Many of the members do have relatives or friends that had relatives that were a part of the Buffalo Soldiers. Amazing enough, some of those didn't come to light until after the death of the Buffalo Soldiers. Today, I believe we have twenty-one original Buffalo Soldiers. And my time is up. We are here for you to ask questions, and I thank you all for allowing me to come. Before I close, I want to bring up Mrs. Matthews for inviting me- -for inviting me to come, share this information with you. And I'm presenting to her a ninth and a tenth pen as representation and as gratitude.
Thank you so much.
Well, this is my presentation, right?
You're going to call him up here?
Okay.
Oh, Corey.
Oh, Corey. It's a... You're gonna call him up? You want him to come up? We have representatives from the following offices, and I would ask for them to come forward and then just follow the order of Chair Iziebi. Congresswoman Judy Chu, Senator Anthony Portantino, Supervisor Catherine Barker, Assembly Member Chris Holden, of course, our own Altadena Town Council, and Altadena Historic Society.
I say wow, and congratulations for being in our midst. We truly, truly reverence and appreciate the sacrifice, the diligence, the wisdom, the bravery that you exhibited. So I know that there are so many people here ready to offer certificates of recognition. So I'll do the Altadena Town Council very quickly. So I think the best way to do it is to have you please come. You deserve a standing ovation and we...
There we go.
There we go. Okay, this is a certificate from the Altadena Town Council, and it says, "Certificate of Recognition, Master Sergeant Bruce Edwards Dennis, Retired." It says, "Buffalo Soldier, Second and Tenth Cavalry Regiment of the United States Army. We recognize your service, courage, and most of all, your sacrifices. Your dedication to the United States of America is commendable, and we honor you for your brave fight for freedom, not only for families in America, but throughout the world." And it is signed today, Tuesday, April 17, 2018, by myself, the Chair Altadena Town Council. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
I will leave it here for you because there are so many you'll be carrying with you, so...
Okay.
So I leave it here for you.
Okay.
And I would like to...okay, come on.
Good evening, everyone. So I too have a certificate of Congressional recognition from Congresswoman Judy Chu's office, which reads, "In recognition of your high standards of excellence and outstanding achievements, your dedication to honorably answering the call of duty and serving with great valor and distinction in America's Armed Forces is truly commendable and greatly appreciated. Your contributions have made a lasting impact on this country. Congratulations on all your accomplishments." So this is for you.
Thank you, Donna.
You're very welcome. And I also have a certificate for Rachel. We just definitely wanted to celebrate 152nd, the 152nd Anniversary, and so we did not want to walk away without having presented you a certificate as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So my name is Dominic Corey, and I'm here on behalf of California State Senator Anthony Portantino, and I am honored to join the Altadena community and thanking you for your outstanding service to our nation. Your selflessness, your dedication and commitment to our country and our freedoms will forever be held in our hearts and minds because it was your bravery to serve on the front lines that protected us and keeps on protecting us. Thank you for your service yesterday, today and tomorrow, and best wishes on all your future endeavors, and just thank you for all that you've done and being an inspiration to us all.
Thank you. Thank you.
You got it.
Good evening, Altadena Town Council. My name is Hector Rodriguez. I'm here on behalf of Assembly Member Chris Holden, and I'm here to honor Master Sergeant Bruce Edwards Dennis in recognition of your outstanding military service to our country during World War II, including guarding the Mexican border from foreign spies and being deployed overseas for various assignments. Buffalo Soldiers were segregated military units of African Americans who mainly served on the western frontier following the American Civil War and beyond. This continued until President Truman issued an executive order eliminating racial segregation in America's Armed Forces. Today, we thank you for your ongoing service to the Buffalo Soldiers Cavalry Association and for your commitment to educating the public about their courage and achievements. Congratulations on receiving this well-deserved award. Thank you.
Thank you.
A great honor. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Ooh.
Good evening to the Altadena community, the Chairman and Vice Chair of the Town Council and all of the Town Council members. It's an honor for me to be here on behalf of Valley County Supervisor Catherine Barker. As noted by Trooper Hilliard, there is something ringing in my mind for the last few days, which is, "Go west, young man, go west." And in doing so, we came out here and we discovered gold. But one thing, as far as Altadena is dear to my heart, and we have gold right here in our community, which is our own Master Sergeant Dennis. So we, on behalf of Valley County Supervisor Catherine Barker, would like to thank you for your service and even more so, your legacy that you have here in this community and that you share with others, even on tonight. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause]
I represent Altadena Historical Society, and we're pleased to recognize Trooper Bruce Edward Dennis for his service during World War II as a member of the Buffalo Soldiers Second and Tenth Horse Cavalry and for his continuing service in support of the Buffalo Soldiers Ninth and Tenth Cavalry Association. We're proud to claim Trooper Dennis, a man who has lived our country's history as a citizen of Altadena, California.
Thank you. Thank you. [applause] You want to say a few words?
Yes, that would be great. Okay, Chair's privilege. Gotta respect the man of the hour, so let him say a few words.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say a few words about the Buffalo Soldiers. A lot of people don't know about the Buffalo Soldiers. There was two, one cavalry outfit, that was First Cavalry Division was all white. But after the Civil War, the U.S. Government decided to make an all-black regiment. We were the Second Cavalry Regiment. The White was the First Cavalry. We were the Second Cavalry. And it was composed of all-black, all-black soldiers, right after the Civil War. So there were ex-slaves from the south and the north and everything was formed. But we were...the soldiers were treated, they helped settle the west, just like the White did. They fought Indians, they captured Geronimo, they captured in Oklahoma, Texas, New Mexico, South Dakota, North Dakota. Of course, there was no California then. But they fought the Indians also. They got a little...this one thing that tickles me, you remember General Custer that was annihilated back in Montana? He refused to rule the Second Cavalry Division, all-black. But then he was annihilated. He was supposed to wait until the Second, Tenth Cavalry come in. He did not wait, and that's why he was annihilated. No kidding. That's it. But it's another funny thing. I was drafted, I was 17 years old when I was drafted in 1942. Now, during the war, you were supposed to be 18 drafted. I was only 17 in 1942, was drafted. And I was drafted out of Oklahoma, and then I went to Fort Seale, Oklahoma. There, they gave you the doctors and you took all kind of tests, you know? They didn't ask you, "Do you want to go with the Army, Navy, Air Force?" Boom, nothing. They don't tell you nothing. So we were in Fort Seale about three weeks, taking examinations and tests, and then all of a sudden, we gathered all this up, I think it was about 60 black soldiers, and they put us on the train. Now, just give you something silly and stupid. We were on the train five days from Fort Seale, Oklahoma to Newport News, Virginia. Now, we were on the train, I don't know if anybody remembers the old trains, no air condition and no windows, and then there was black steam coming out, and you had to...when we went through Arizona and New Mexico, we had to pull the shades down. Guess why? Why do you think they pulled this? We had to pull the shades down. They didn't want to see any black soldiers. That's the truth. It took us five days to get from Fort Seale, Oklahoma to Newport News, Virginia. Same thing when we were going through Virginia, Alabama, and we had to pull the shades down. Now, one more thing, silly, stupid. What do you think we had on the train? Peanut butter sandwiches and...thing with sandwiches? That it is all we had on the train for five days. Five days, that's how we were treated. And they told us to go, but I was wounded twice, but it's the same thing, I'll give you one more Trooper thing. I know, I knew how to ride a horse, my relatives had a farm and I used to ride horses, so... in the cavalry, we were there for about three weeks before they took us to down to the corral. Now, there was a corral of about six or seven hundred horses, and guess what happened? The corporals, we were called troopers. Trooper, here's a halter. Now, if you don't know what a halter is, it's just a rope. Go out there, trooper, and get on a horse. Get you a horse, find a horse. Now, you wouldn't assign the horse. You go out and pick you up, and they gave you a halter. All a halter is, is something, a rope you throw around the horse. Get on that horse, bareback. You get on a horse, but in a horse cavalry, you do everything with your knee, your leg, legs and your bridle. If you want them to go this way, you do this, you do this, it will go right, they could do this. But the thing about it, the more you do with your squeeze on the horse, guess what happened? Everybody get on, and you're doing this, and the horse takes off, boom, and they throw you off. Trooper, get back up on that horse. And then again, 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 and it happens there over and over again till you learn how to ride bareback. Okay, thank you so much for everything. Okay. Okay. [applause]
Yes, yes. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven, 7.1, Land Use Committee, and that will be Council Member Marcusson.
Okay, I would like to say that the Land Use Committee met two weeks ago tonight. One of the items that we discussed or that we announced that I want to make sure everybody hears again is that we had the presentation for fences and hedges from the county a month ago. There has not been one person, of all the people, that were upset about the fences and hedges ordinance and wanted to have a permission to, you know, have 15 years before they had to do anything about it and not be cited. Not one family has signed up. So if you know anybody that has a non-conforming fence or hedge now, now is the time to sign up and then be carefree for 15 years. And I, you know, I don't quite know what to do to get people to do it. This is not a, it's clearly, nobody's gonna come after you, this is not you telling the county that you have an illegal fence or hedge and have it come back to haunt you. That's not what this is. Anyway, okay. The other thing is that I want to be really clear that New York Drive, the New York Drive Project that the county is working on, is there, what they're currently doing right now is working on getting information together for a public meeting, a public hearings, another, a public hearing meeting just for the New York Drive. And so we'll keep you posted on that. Okay, we had, we had a presentation on La Vina. We did, and I want to make sure that I do this before too many people leave. As you may know, the Land Use Committee previously finalized extensive recommended conditions for the La Vina Two Project. However, the committee and the community was interested in developing a parity condition for the project. In the course of the research, the committee discovered a situation with the Owen Brown grave site land that checks all the boxes and also provides Altadena with the opportunity to preserve a historical site that is currently on private property. It's important to note that the La Vina developer, Tim Cantwell, who's here tonight, has become a partner on this project and advocate as well. The Subcommittee presented the information regarding the proposal of this final condition at our last town land use meeting two weeks ago, and the plan is to repeat the presentation at our May 1st meeting. I encourage and request that anyone interested in the La Vina Two Project and all of the proposed conditions to attend the meeting on May 1st, to provide public comment so that you can be included in the due diligence for the project. And you can also contact me directly if you have any questions or want to discuss it ahead of time. My email and phone number are both on the Altadena Town Council website. So it's gonna be an important meeting. We're gonna go do our presentation again, and we want to finalize the conditions for the project in the meeting, May 1st. So the next item that we did is an action item. We voted on a project to, there is a, there's construction at 2203 Garfius Drive, for those of you that may not have been in the land use meeting. There's a construction at 2203 Garfius Drive. It's existing construction in process with a setback exception of approximately nine inches. So for those of you that weren't here, the side of the house is nine inches short of the five feet, which is the current code. of the five feet, which is the current code. The house itself is set back nine feet, nine inches, sorry, inches less because that's what it was at the time, was built before that, the five foot code. They want to, they want to extend that same plane, if you will, the nine inches away, ten feet back, further than it is today. And so, and that's what the request is. The land use committee voted to recommend to the town council that we, recommend to you guys that you approve it, that the town council approves the project or, and sends it down to regional planning with a recommended approval without conditions. Does anybody have any questions on the project itself that may not have been at the meeting or?
Well, once you make your, your motion, then we can discuss.
Okay, I'll make the motion. In the matter of the property located at twenty-two oh three Garfius regarding the existing construction with a setback exception of approximately nine inches, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to Regional Planning Commission Committee recommending approval without conditions.
Second. Okay, you have heard the motion and properly seconded. And any discussions, any comments? And is the applicant in the, in the room? Okay, all right. So that's up to you, council.
Do you have any public comment?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay.
Okay, just last call. Any public comments on this, this matter? Okay, none. So council member, you are ready for your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Again, you heard the motion, properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposing? Any abstention? Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, so we will send a letter down to the Regional Planning Commission. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, moving along to agenda item number seven point two. And that will be the education committee, council member Lee. Okay.
Hi, okay. The education committee would like to say that our Women's History Month celebration at Elliott Middle School, and that involved the other middle schools also, was a great success and that Dr. Brian McDonald, our superintendent, was so happy about it that he wants to do it next year on a Saturday so that more people can attend. And thank you to all the council members who came. We really appreciate it. It was celebratory and people loved it. And we wanted to thank all of the politicians who sent field representatives and they really enjoyed it too. So the whole thing was fantastic and the education committee is planning our next town hall in June. And we haven't set the date yet, but we will. And Billy Malone is also on the committee. And if he wanted to say anything, because he was at the assembly as a, as a member of the town council and as a proud father.
I would just like to say that it was a wonderful event. I mean, it was, it included all of PUSD and the students were amazing. The essays that were picked and read, if you get a chance, go next year. These kids put their passion into it and their feelings into it. And to hear our youth, I mean, a lot, you hear a lot of people making comments about our youth today, millenniums, millenniums, millenniums. But to actually hear some of these kids and their stories and where they're coming from makes you feel proud about our future. So don't miss it next year. I want to, it was a good turnout, it was a good turnout from the right people. I had a nice conversation with McDonald, Superintendent McDonald. I'm looking forward to next year. I'm looking forward to being an annual event and please support it. It's very important. And special thanks to Jennifer to set it all up.
Thank you so much. Item number seven point three, election committee. Doctor, council member, Dr. Thomas.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair and council and community. Well, the evening has come. The, the April, April twenty eighteen election committee report is as follows. We thought since there were dates that everyone had been waiting for, we thought we would give them to you, give everyone a copy so they could kind of follow along and then we can take it from there. All right. On April the tenth, twenty eighteen, the Altadena Town Council Election Committee met to prepare for the upcoming election. We inventoried all the signs which the committee and volunteers will place throughout the community. We confirmed early voting and the Saturday regular voting locations. We created the applicant packets for distribution at the community center and online and discussed a marketing plan for, for the event within the community and on getting it out on the social media. This plan includes the creation of a flyer that will be available at the main Altadena Library and at the community center as well as online. And a lot of information is on the flyer. Anybody that wasn't, they can see some of us after the meeting. As for the polling locations, in order to ensure that all census tracts are covered, we can right now confirm early voting on Tuesday, June fifth, from four to eight PM at the main Altadena Library. Now for regular voting on Saturday, June ninth, from nine AM to five PM in West Altadena at the Bob Lucas Library, in Central Altadena at the main Altadena Library, and in East Altadena at Patty Cakes. Depending on the number of applications, additional polling locations may be added and those will be announced at the May Altadena Town Council meeting if necessary. Applicant packets are, they're already prepared and will be available on Friday, April twentieth, for pickup at the community center. And they'll be online at altadinatowncouncil.org. As we move forward now with election preparation, we welcome and we encourage volunteers, everyone in the community, including but not limited to all of our community groups, our neighborhood associations, churches and et cetera. Any and all from the community are welcome and needed, specifically in the areas of whatever they would like to do, sign placement, polling locations, setup, take down, and the polling location staffing. Now to review the important dates, those dates are April twentieth, twenty eighteen, the application packets will be available. May the eleventh, twenty eighteen is the deadline for filing your applications. June the fifth, twenty eighteen.
You better not be late coming back from Africa.
I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead.
Oh, is early voting. June the ninth, twenty eighteen is regular voting and July seventeenth, twenty eighteen is new member swearing in. Mr. Chair, that ends our report and I move for acceptance of this month's election committee report.
Okay, good. Council member, you have heard, heard the, the report from the ATC Election Committee and, and his, a motion to accept and properly seconded. Any questions before we? Okay, a question?
I have a question. The voting at Bob Lucas didn't work last time because of the church parks there on Saturday.
We talked to Brian Roy about the parking situation. So we addressed it with him.
And they're gonna, they think that we'll be fine, but we did address it with.
You did, okay, because there was a problem with the parking.
Are you going to put posters over there? Because you didn't say that you suggested the main library. Put posters that are probably restricted.
Yes. Yes. Well, we just said that the committee would put the posters out, but they'll be around the community.
And at that library.
And at that library. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for all the questions and clarification. I do know that we do have a public comment, somebody who wants to comment on that item number seven point three. And at this time I will bring up Nicole Moore.
So thank you for the information tonight. I'm a little, we had really hoped to get this information out sooner for folks because as neighbors building a better Altadena, we made a recommendation that we get started sooner because the more people who are aware that they can run and the more people that run, the better off we are. We had a, in cooperation with the National Women's Political Caucus, a training on how to run for office. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough information that people even knew they could run. None of our, none of the people there were running for Altadena Town Council. So that was a disappointment. But I think we need to get, figure out how to get started earlier in the future. But for this year, I guess some of the questions I have is who's on the committee? We, we've gotten the response that there was going to be information tonight, but we weren't able to have direct conversations with folks about some of the ideas that we had to support the council in, in getting the election out. Is it, I know that.
Let me tell you who's on the committee.
Okay.
Okay. The election committee this year, Dr. Sandra Thomas is the chair, Victoria Napp is the vice chair, and Billy Malone is the election events coordinator.
So there's no community members on the committee?
No, it was just three council people this time.
Okay. Well, NBBA would like to recommend that it's really helpful to have more people involved and not just council members. So, and that was one of the recommendations we made early in November. When will the information be online? I know it's not up yet, so.
Okay, I think I can take that. The report indicated that the information will be online in terms of the application, so it will be there. Also.
Thank you.
It's all on that, on that sheet that we gave out.
Okay. And I do, we also want to encourage folks whose seats are open to please announce if you're running or not because that helps the community know, I mean, if they love you and everything, they might not want to run, but if you're not going to, that's why we've had these empty seats sometimes because, or appointed only seats. So I'd really encourage people to state publicly what it is. And encourage folks who are interested in running, buildingabetteraltadena.org has some information up about running for council and there's, in addition to the Altadena council site. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we have been announcing the, the committee members at the end of each month's report, so I'm sorry about that.
Yeah. Okay, let me just clarify one thing. Go ahead before I say something.
No, I'm just going to make a comment that, you know, we have, there's two people from each census tract and one person will run in June and the next person runs, so it's always the same. It's always, it starts in April and voting is in June. That doesn't change. So it's every year in terms of the regularity. It's not like it changes. So for next year, I'll be up for reelection and should I choose to run or not run and the applications will be due in April and everything will be the same, a couple of days different maybe depending on, you know, the calendar year, but for the most part it's always the same. There's no changes.
How do you know?
That's a different story, but she was asking about being notified ahead of time. And I'm saying now, next year for two thousand nineteen.
I'm having to talk with folks about the idea of starting earlier with getting the information out because not enough people know about the council or understand what the council does. In my old knocking on doors telling people to vote, I found twelve old timers on my street who has no knowledge of the council. So we have to get more information out and sort of a mini campaign to get the, the community more engaged, which will lead to having a vote.
Absolutely. I concur to that. In January, which was unprecedented, that was when the election chair was appointed. So we started way in advance and we allow, we encourage the community to continue to participate, help as much as possible. So we are really looking and striving to get the turnout. I keep using a figure, which I am honored to mention that number. I'm looking, hopefully that we get a couple thousand people to come out and vote and it's going to get some footwork, a lot more transparency and really reaching out. So the chair to the election committee is already asked the community, please help, do your own part. We are doing our own part. So I'm not sure what are the ways that, or any other things that we can say other than we solicit, we welcome the community to participate.
I would like to say one more thing. Our vice chair gave us the perfect model. She won't like me calling it perfect, but she gave us a very good model to follow. And as we went through it, she just gave it to us, said, here you go. And, and when we went through it with her, there wasn't a whole lot of things that had to really be changed and they seemed to work well. The ones that we felt needed to be changed, we changed those. But things that weren't broke, broken, we saw no reason to start trying to fix them. And so we kind of did everything just straight along in a line where we thought it would work best for the community. So now we need everybody's help and support. So thank you so much for that.
Okay. Now there was a motion on the table and properly, you have a comment? Okay.
Couple of quick comments. One is that the flyers with all the information and regarding where to find it, the information will be at the library as stated, but we also recommend if anybody wants to help distribute, you can pick them up from the library, libraries are printing for us, and you can pick up several and then help distribute from the community. So don't feel like it's just there. If you have time and you can do it and you want to volunteer and you want to drop them off a couple of businesses you know or someone you know, grab some from the library and take them for distribution. So you can help that way. The second thing I want to mention only, I know it was brought up earlier, but it was a question of term limits. I've done two terms. This is my third term, which I will be next year up, whether I run again, I don't know. But in those two terms, there's thirteen people sitting at this table right now. Eight of them were not on the council when I started. So I just want to point that out when you're talking time limits of the people sitting at this table, five of them were on the council when I started and I've done two terms. So there has been some good turnover and, and there's been some nice fresh blood and I'd like to see that continue and enthusiasm within the community as well. So.
They're back there, ready.
Okay. All right. There was a motion and seconded. All in favor? Anyone opposing? Any abstention? The report accepted. Moving on to the next agenda item. Moving on to the next agenda item and that will be Safe Streets Committee. Dr. Coleman.
Councilmembers, I'm speaking, I'm Ann Coleman. I am speaking in Dorothy Wong's place because she is in Washington DC. She's advocating for open spaces and I understand she spoke with Diane Feinstein and Judy Chu today, so I hope that she'll share with us all her experience in Washington today. So last, at last month's town council meeting, the chair announced the formation of the Altadena Safe Streets Committee. I am on that committee, on the steering committee, as are two council members, Judy Matthews and Veronica Jones, and members of the community and two people from the library. The mission of the Safe Streets Committee is to advocate for safe, inclusive, and healthy streets for all users regardless of mode and ability. To keep this short, I will, I will just announce our first town hall, April 28th, that's Saturday in the afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00. It'll be a fun event with workshops, presentations, and a visioning exercise. There are flyers at the back of the room for people in the audience here. And we hope that we get a good turnout. There will also be refreshments and we, it'll be at the library in the community room. Thank you. So I, I think it'll be a fun event. We'll share our concerns and we'll also get some information on how good street design can improve safety and the general welfare of the community. Lastly, I'd like to say that the committee will be opening, opening up to the public and having regular meetings here at the community center. And the day, the days, they will, it will meet once a month. We'd like to invite all members of the council to come to those meetings or to send representatives because we'd like to see all corners of Altadena represented on the committee. There will be open meetings here on, on one night of the month and that night will be announced at the town hall and also on the ATC website. It'll probably be a Thursday, but we don't know which Thursday yet. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? All right, thank you so much. Wonderful. Community Relations Committee, council member Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Community Relations Committee report. For April is as follows. As you know, this committee, the items are ongoing until they are placed in archives or removed. Number one, ongoing, an ongoing community request regarding the census tract reps reporting monthly on their PUSD schools. This was referred to, back to the Education Committee Chair. We're still waiting for her to respond and let us know what she wants done with that. Number two, there's still the offer from the Altadena Historical Society to occasionally share a moment of Altadena at a glance. We had a wonderful moment of that this evening during ATC meeting. That was referred to the Executive Committee. We're, we're waiting on the Executive Committee to let us know when they want to do that. Number three, the issue we still have is Christopher Blue. Executive, there is an update on that. On April 14th, 2018, demonstrators gathered in protest, chanting and displaying signs and slogans while marching in solidarity around the mobile station on Fair Oaks Avenue and Woodbury Road where the incident occurred. Let's see. The article to it is lengthy and the demands are many. So we're just gonna place the article with the committee report and it'll be posted on the website just for a matter of record and everyone can, can go there. Last month, we were, we had the Buffalo Soldiers. The update is that the certificates have been done and presented, but there is still the plaque part of that, that is still pending. ATC acknowledgement for Cinco de Mayo. Update, the acknowledgement plans are now in progress for those certificate, which will be presented at the May 15th meeting. And that's being handled by Nestor. He's going to take care of that. Neighborhood Watch Group Night. The CRC member, Mr. Elliot Gold, is taking the lead on that from this point on and so he told us the plans are forthcoming. We've been asked by the Chamber of Commerce to introduce older new businesses occasionally. Chamber Chair Doug Cauliflow, pending consideration. He will announce the businesses, maybe one every six months or so. The PUSD closings, that's tabled, pending the Education Committee action. If she brings it back up to us, fine. If not, we'll leave it tabled. Mr. Chair, that's our report. She's looking at me like I'm not bringing that back up. Okay. Mr. Chair and council, we submit this April 2018 report and all of the attachments will be placed on the website in the committee section as a matter of record.
Okay. Councilmember Markerson?
So Sandra, the, I don't see Doug here tonight, but, so what I, what you're saying about chamber is that they won't be on the agenda unless they tell you that they want to be on the agenda? Is that what you said?
Well, we thought that, when I spoke to Doug, he said that maybe every, every now and then. That's how we, you know.
Right, so that...
And so every now and then, we, we have enough things going on, so we thought maybe once every six months. Now, they would probably, we have enough businesses to do it more often, but we just thought maybe once every six months or if needed.
Right. So he'll tell you if he has something to announce and he'll, then he'll be on the agenda.
That's regarding businesses.
Huh?
No.
No.
Not agenda items?
Not agenda.
No.
Okay.
Like it, the report, I believe still, the report still play, remains on a monthly basis, correct? It's only a presentation of new businesses encountered.
Right. Or unless he, for some reason, has something that he wants to do with one of the old businesses. We won't limit him to that in, in our committee.
Okay, all right.
But, but Billy has a similar position on the chamber, so he and I would work, we can work it out.
Okay, all right. No problem. Sorry, I was just confused.
Okay, thank you so much. The, you heard the report and we will include it and post it on the website. So moving on to the next item, we are on the community, Altadena Community Reports and let's start with the library.
Good evening, councilmembers. Ladies and gentlemen of the community, hello. So I'm passing around our usual newsletter that I know you're excited to read every month, so I have that. And there are a couple on the table in the back if anyone is interested. They're also available on our website and plenty of print flyers at the library. And then the second thing I want to talk about and the second flyer you'll have is our Community Conversations Year in Review. And I'll talk about that second. Lift this up a little bit. So first off, as much as I'd love to read through our whole newsletter, I will just say that April is National Poetry Month. So we have our annual event, Poetry and Cookies at the library, which is one of the biggest poetry readings in Altadena. We put together, I shouldn't say we because our poet laureate, who's the current poet laureate, Eileen Lipkin, and longtime library employee Paulie Dutton are the editors of the Altadena Poetry Review and the library helps fund that book. But they put that out each year and at Poetry and Cookies, we have many, many of our local community poets come and read their work to a fairly large crowd. So it's, it's definitely one of the bigger poetry community events and I'd love to invite everybody to it. It's on a Sunday, April 29th, in the library, so it's not a day we're usually open. We open specially for this event and it's from 1:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. So we're going to have, of the 104 poets that are featured in the poetry anthology, many of them will be there reading their work that day, so we invite everyone to come to that. Secondly, the other handout that I passed out, which I have several copies of in the back, is our Community Conversations Year in Review. The Community Conversations Initiative sprang out of an American Libraries Association initiative called Libraries Transforming Communities. And that is, initiative is all about libraries and librarians looking outside of the walls of the library, figuring out ways that they can get involved in community engagement and get out into the community and be change agents for their community rather than just focus on what's going on inside the walls of the library. So about a year ago, we started this whole movement, which we refer to as Community Conversations, where we met with many people out in the community and had 23 conversations at different places in Altadena. Most of them were in people's living rooms, but we also had them in some schools. We had them in places of worship and coffee shops, restaurants and things like that and tried to get as spread out among the computer, community as we could. And there's actually a document on our website, if you want to learn more about that process, that you can download. It's a 19-page summary of that whole initial community conversations and what we learned from it. And it talks about where each of these 23 conversations took place and all that we learned from that. The main goal of it was to figure out what the aspirations and dreams were for the people who lived in Altadena and start conversations about those aspirations and, and figure out how that we could take action on them, either individually or collectively, to make some real change in the community. That culminated in a town hall meeting for Community Conversations, which is what took place a year ago in April of 2017. So what this document is, is the progress we have made or just the highlights of the progress since that 2017 town hall meeting and what has come of those discussions, how we are keeping that alive, what the library is doing to continue to take action on the 11 priority areas that were outlined through the Community Conversations process. And like I say, this is, there's a wealth of information on this on our website. If you go to altedinallibrary.org/communityconversations and, and that website is listed on this flyer and it's also very easily Googled under Altadena Library Community Conversations. So I would just like to invite everyone to take a look at this rather brief document. It's just one fold-out page and it does talk about many of the successes that we've had throughout our Community Conversations Initiative, which we have a team in the library of staff members who consult with a community engagement specialist, Brian Berry, who works with Collaborate Pasadena and a number of other organizations. And that team meets monthly to figure out where we are on all of the initiatives that we're pushing forward and what else we can do. So it's, it's a very important part of what we do in the library in terms of our community engagement and our outreach and our methodology of, of turning outward is the phrase we like to use because the, the Libraries Transforming Community Movement has adopted the Harwood method of community engagement and, and turning outward is, is their phrase for not just focusing on what we're doing in our services throughout the library and inside the walls, but also what we're doing at large. So thank you all for entertaining me this evening and if you have any questions...
Any question?
In more ways than one. So any questions from the, oh, I see Victoria.
Councilmember Markerson?
I just have a quick question. I don't know if you know or not. And it's just, it's just for my own clarification because I have people in my neighborhood.
Okay.
For your raising chickens thing that you're doing?
Yes.
I'm assuming that whoever's doing this is entirely up to date on what the LA County Code is on chickens?
So...
And that they're gonna share that because there are a lot of people that think they can have free range and they can't and like, I just want to make sure that they're gonna be putting out accurate info.
Sure. Well, that's a presentation that has already taken place, so that's part of our seed library presentations.
Oh, Eagle 7, okay.
Yeah. So it, it is a good question. I know that, that Sue who did the presentation has raised chickens, so whether she's doing that illegally is probably a good question. That would've been a good audience question, but...
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying that if...
Sure, there are definitely...
Yeah, if the Altadena library is gonna, I mean, we can do chickens. That's not, you know, that's not a problem, but there are rules.
Yeah. I, I once lived in an apartment building next to people who raised chicken. This was in the middle of the city, back east where I'm from, and it was not fun. So I understand exactly where those, those questions come from.
Too late. I just think that's part of what you guys should be checking on when you have these events.
That's, that's a great point.
Because we can have chickens. We, we're allowed to have chickens, but there are...
Yes, there are rules to dictate it, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point, thank you.
You know, we know that LA County is complaint-driven, right? And so starting out, knowing that you're not gonna get complained on right away is a really good way to start. Like I said, I've seen people online talking about how they have free-range chickens.
Yeah. I think the, the impetus for this program was that Sue had written a book and she was marketing it. That was, that was kind of, it was a little bit of a book talk signing.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I just, I, well, a book tie-in would be good to a library thing, but yeah, I just, I just want to make, you know, we, there are a lot of complaints in Altadena about people getting turned in and, you know, all of that and complained about it and that's, unfortunately, if you start out not following the rules, then if somebody complains, then you get nailed. So, yeah. It's just really good to start out knowing ahead of time what you can and can't do.
Absolutely, thank you.
But anyway, too late.
Okay. Councilmember Nat?
On behalf of the Election Committee, I just wanted to thank you so much for working with us to get everything printed timely and your staff did a fabulous job of making sure everything was collated exactly per instruction, so thanks so much.
Perfect, no problem. That was, that was our pleasure and our wonderful, wonderful multi-function machine collated everything for us and stapled it for us. That's why I responded so quickly.
We will, we will remember about your multi-function machine.
Okay, well, thank you so much and, and we will move on.
All right.
I don't think we have any, any more questions. We going to try to hopefully speed things up a little bit. It's time, time is of the essence now. Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Malone?
Okay, I'll make this brief. A quick report, this was supposed to be by Doug Cauliflow, so I'm stepping in his place right now. A couple of events coming up. The Chamber of Commerce in Altadena will be having a business fair co-sponsored with the Altadena Farmers Market on April the 25th between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. If you have a business in town and you want to meet new clients, show off your businesses, it's free for Chamber of Commerce members, so you need to be a Chamber of Commerce member. Space is limited, access to electrical, it's a free, free business fair. On May the 10th, San Gabriel Valley Chamber Mixer, we're mixing with all the other chambers. There's gonna be the Altadena Chamber of Commerce, La Canada, Rosemeat, San Gabriel, San Marino, Sierra Madre, South Pasadena, and Tempo City. So it's a chance to mix with those other Chamber of Commerce and see what we can do as a united entity. We've also agreed that this year, according to our funding, we just announced that we will be giving away four scholarships again this year as opposed to the additional two. Two scholarships will go to Quality of Life and two, two scholarships will go to students of access to college, so that we're excited about. And total new membership this week, this month alone, I think, was five. So that's, in a nutshell.
Any questions for the chamber? Councilmember Malone? Okay. Collaborate Pasadena, Councilmember Sanyika?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council Meeting was held on, at the Flint Ridge Center on March 28th at 6:00 PM. The director explained that due to the Pasadena Unified School District budget cuts, the Collaborate Pasadena will experience a $75,000 loss from the district and that we must spend time looking... spend time looking at other areas for program funding. There was a conversation with the Executive Director, Kristi Zalmani, and the youth representatives from the Day One Activist Network. They discussed a few of the projects that youth were engaged in and how we can get involved. The projects included the National Drug Take Back Day, Spot the Pot, and the Don't Test Your Luck Designate a Driver campaign. The New Human Resources Manager, Dr. Stephen Miller, gave an update on the fiscal stabilization plan. He stated that the district will have less money than was thought to work with, so they plan to look at the special needs of each school and provide tiered support based on the need. The mayor gave an update on the city. He just stated that the budget planning has started, and that they are committed to getting a balanced budget that must be adopted by June. In closing, the director requested a meeting of the Executive Leadership Council in the near future to strategize Collaborate Pasadena's funding plans. And with there being no more questions or comments, the meeting was adjourned at 7:45. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanyika. Any questions from council? Okay. Thank you. LA County Department of Parks and Recs, item number 8.4. Okay. Item number 8.5, 41st Assembly. Councilmember Matthews.
I'm basically going to refer a lot of the reports to the Assembly Member's website because this, to avoid repeating something that doesn't have to be repeated. So for the month of March, March the, I think it was March the 28th, Assembly Member Holden introduced legislation to protect college athletes from harmful NCAA policies. Another legislation which I think everyone would be interested in is April 10th, AB 2623, maximum, minimum, sorry, minimum wage for developmental disability services providers. The other complete bill list from Assembly Member Holden, you can obtain that from his website, which I will give to you in a moment. The most recent press releases regarding the Holocaust ceremony, which was in Sacramento, and Mr. Holden recognized the Holocaust survivor, Isabel Theresa Huber, I believe that's the correct pronunciation, of Claremont on the Assembly floor in Sacramento this year. And again, this information can be received off of the Assembly Member's website. On the 21st of this month, Assembly Member Holden is the keynote speaker at the CHAP CARE's 20th anniversary event honoring people and organizations that helped become a safety net provider, serving over 15,000 patients annually with medical, dental, vision, and behavioral health services. Also, on the 28th of April, he will be, he's partnering with the CHP on, in regards to kids' space. There's, I believe, flyers in the back on that. If not, again, you can get this information from the CHP regarding the kids' space. Anyone interested in that, they can call the CHP at 626-296-8100. Any other information pertaining to Assembly Member Holden, you can visit a141.asmdc.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Councilmember Matthews?
It didn't say. I think it's a Jewish. It's the Jewish Holocaust. I don't have the flyer informing me, but it's the Jewish Holocaust.
All right. Thank you again. And Census Track report, Census Track 4601.
I just wanted to make the council and the community aware that the Pasadena Showcase House of Design, as previously indicated, is taking place in Census Track 4601. It will commence on April 22nd and run through May 20th. The home is on Altadena Drive at 1369 East Altadena Drive. Traffic will be impacted in the area. Shuttles this year are coming from Santa Anita, not the Rose Bowl as been in previous years. And the showcase house has allotted a 75-foot turnout in front of the home. This is between Porter and Holliston. I think it's between, yeah, Porter and Holliston. Is that right? Yeah. So there'll be a turnout in front of the house. There'll be no parking signs within 500 feet of the residence. Residents in the area will receive a parking pass for themselves, any guests, and any workers that they have that are coming to their homes during the time that the showcase is underway. So just wanted to make you aware, watch Altadena Drive, starting on April 22nd, there will be shuttles running daily, all day, as they shuttle people to the showcase house. Thank you.
Thank you so much. 4610.
Thank you. I just wanted to report last, oh, week from this past Wednesday, we had Days of Dialogue. It went very well. We expected 48 people. We ended up with 67 people, and we had every division of law enforcement there, along with the city manager of Pasadena. And there's going to be other dialogues. We're working on dialogues with youth. Also, on May 11th, in our Census Track 4610, as I see you guys out there, Chris Holden is coming, and he will be there. We're, I'm hosting Social Hour with Chris Holden at my house. So I'll be getting in touch with you to be there. He wants to come to West Altadena. So I got a call asking what I host, and I said yes. And also, I wanted to, I know that we all know, but there's going to be, thanks to the Board of Supervisors, we're getting a new light at Windsor and Figueroa. It should be started, I think, it should be completed by 2020. So I'm not sure when it starts. And we're also getting blinking lights in the sidewalk at Crosby and Lincoln, right? And then I just wanted to tell LA County supervisors, thank you for that, for doing those things. But thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. 4603.2.
As you recall, last year, we had a community cleanup, and I just want to thank the community for keeping our Census Track clean. We, I mean, everybody has pitched in and done their job. I really want to thank Susie Niemer and Public Works and Athens Trash for their diligence. Every time there's something in our Census Track that's not supposed to be there, they, you know, pick it up right away, and people have really kept everything nice, clean, and tidy. I didn't even have to put a trash can over on Altadena Drive and Lincoln, you know, and monitoring, so we won't have to do that event this year. Just keep up the great work.
Thank you so much, council. It is 1010. All right. Okay. Thank you, our community, for coming. Thank you, council members. The meeting that's adjourned is 1010.